You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
It is 6:30. We'll go ahead and call the June 15th Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'll start with roll call. Brooks.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Brian.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
Alyssa.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
We have a quorum. Item number three. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four. Approval of minutes of the June 1st, 2023 meeting.
Who's to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission can do so now. We ask that you hold your comments to five minutes. If you are on an agenda item later in the meeting, you will get a chance to speak then. Anyone?
If this, you have part of the presentation to speak or you can wait.
I will ask for people to speak, yes. Then we will move on to item number six. A rezone application for 117 East Holly Boulevard. I believe that is Mr. Warecamp. Come on up, man.
So just an introduction. This is a property that was zoned back in 1978. R2 special exception. So zoning has since changed. So this is a rezone to general business to make it a conforming use again. It is currently nonconforming as it sits, so.
Yes, sir.
The history is, I'm Dr. Scott Warecamp. I've had a dental practice here for 42 years. I was kind of, I call it courted by Gene Johnson back in 1978. I was starting as senior dental student and word got out that I was looking to start a new practice. I didn't want to practice with anyone. I had a brother two years behind me. We were going to practice together. That was the thought. We were trying to find a place to practice dentistry and we were looking for a place without a dentist. And Gene heard that and got ahold of me and asked me to come to town. He wanted to show me the town. So he showed me the town and he said, well, what do you need to get started? And I said, well, we're going to have to have a building or something. He says, we're a little short there. But, you know, I got to know Gene, behind the scenes Gene, and he was known as also as Boss Hogg. If you know Dukes of Hazard, he was a realtor. He was the mayor. He grew up in the area, had a lot of land, and he had a lot of foresight. And I call it, he's probably the number one reason I'm here. He said, well, we really don't have, you know, the type of area developed for business that you need, but he says, I know of a piece of property that we might be able to make work. And I said, well, I got a brother two years behind me and, you know, we're going to need a place to practice, the two of us. And he said, well, he said, it's not zoned commercial, but I think I can find a way to make it work is where do you plan to live? I said, right now I'm renting and my brother's going to need a place. And he says, well, could he live in there? And I said, yeah. And I said, okay, well, we can make the lower level. We're going to make it two, two levels to expand into. And he said, well, you know, if one of you can live there, we can make this work, I think, and we'll make a special exception as a residential with the business. Well, it got to be a business and we lost the residential because my brother started having a family. He needed a bigger house, bigger place to live. So that's how it developed into the office that it is and it just kept going that way. And I asked Gene about, a few, number of years ago, about, do I need to change the exception? He goes, I don't see any reason to change it. So I never looked into it. But recently, it's kind of public knowledge that we've sold our practice. I'm still, I'm, I'm employed now.
Congratulations.
Brother's self-employed. I've developed quite a practice and I still love doing what I'm doing. In fact, I've developed a, quite a following. I mean, I've, I've got a patient right now flying in from Pennsylvania to have me treat him. I develop an area of cosmetic dentistry. I'm one of a little over 400 dentists in the world with the accreditation, the American Academy of Cosmetic Dentistry. I can make it look real and natural. It doesn't have to look like chiclets everybody's afraid of. I also place my own implants in most cases, especially in the front of the mouth because they have to be put in the right place or you have a hard time making them look real. So I've got quite a following. I really love doing what I'm doing. The people, it's Neighborhood Dental who bought us out. I, they've been courting me for, our office for 15 years. For every five years, they kept coming after us because they look for successful businesses with dentists about to retire. They thought we were going to retire 15 years ago, but it didn't happen. And so we looked back to them when we, my brother was having back issues, decided, he's, he says, I can't keep doing this. And he's going to, so you want to sell while you're still got the business rolling. We decided to talk with Neighborhood Dental and they treated us real well and bought us out. We still own the property. But they said, you know, we're probably going to be interested in buying the property. It's just we can't make two purchases at one time, you know? Let's get the thing rolling. My brother retired. We've got a new dentist in here and I'm so fortunate to get a dentist with, well, she had eight years and now she's got nine years' experience. She's been with me a year. She's exceptional and so I'm really pleased with it. But Neighborhood Dental said, you know, if we go to purchase that property, we want to make sure that it's zoned business so that if we need to expand and you've got room to expand there, that we're, might be able to do it. And I said, well, I'll approach the.
Awesome. First of all, reading the minutes from 1978 has been awesomely fascinating.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's awesome. I would ask the staff, can you just explain to us why we're hearing a rezone for this? Go ahead, Patrick.
So currently, the, the zone is an R2 special exception. That is an old classification that no longer exists. So based on what we have now, it is a nonconforming use. So should the building somehow, we have something catastrophic happen here in Brandon and the building has destroyed more than 51%, it would not be able to be resumed as a business use.
Okay.
So to allow the business to continue, this is kind of the clear path forward.
Okay. Does anybody up here have any questions for Dr. Warecamp? No? Does anybody here want to speak to this? No? Okay. It, that truly has been fun to read the minutes. I recognized half the names. I don't have, some, some of the places I don't remember, but. So I guess you are.
I was going to say, when I looked around, I said, I know a few faces here. Alicia, I've no, seen, seen you around forever, so.
I guess if nobody has any questions, do you have any thoughts? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Before we have a motion on that, is there a reason why we wouldn't look at the Neighborhood Business District on this? Is there?
Great question.
A reason that their building wouldn't fit into that since it backs up to current residential?
So it would fit into the NB district. GB was the route they took in the application. It's GB across the street. It's both across Holly Boulevard and, and Sue Boulevard. So the Casey's and the Plaza across the street are both GB. So it is in the GB area, but NB would also fit as a zoning classification.
Okay.
So just as a comment.
Microphone, please. Thank you.
As a comment, looking at the.
Hold on.
I.
You did. There you go.
Keep me in line.
Talk away.
Looking at the comprehensive plan, you know, it's not slated for general business, but the other, excuse me, the other three properties on that corner of the intersection are all identified in the plan. And I, in my opinion, it meets the intent of, you know.
Yep.
What should happen on, on Holly, you know, especially close to that intersection.
And has been functioning in that capacity for 40 years, so. Yes?
Can you guys turn it up?
That's all we got, sorry. I can yell into it if you want.
There you go.
Is that better?
Well, we need the period.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone.
One second.
Motion is second to approve the rezone. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you approve our chairman, your recommendation to the city council?
Correct. All right. I will now, this is where things get kind of interesting. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. The Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. The Planning and Zoning Commission. And we will now, uh, call to order the Board of Adjustments. We already have a quorum. Item number nine. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion is second to approve the agenda. Now, this also makes no sense, but item number 10 is public comments. So anybody who would like to address the commission, again, if you are on the agenda, we will get to you. All right. Hearing none. Item number 11. Variance application for 1709 South Dolly Court. Let me get to there. Brent and Pam Hubers? Come on up. Let us know what you'd like to do.
Um, we would like to, right now, we just have a deck and it does have to be replaced. The structure is leaning, starting to lean away from the house. We would like to put a covered deck on our house and screen it in to make a three seasons kind of room. Expand it by two feet. Right now, we have a 12 by 12 deck and we would like to make it a 14 by 14. So I called my contractor, I was talking and I just had made a call to the, the city and asked what the variance was and they said 25 feet. At that time, found out, Melissa, I believe, is who I talked to, said that it had to be 25 feet. And I, at, and I said, at that time, I said, we're not even close to that. We're at 15 feet with, with our deck from our back of our house. It is 25 feet, but then you add the deck. So then we hauled out the paperwork from, so the, the written, I think you guys have this, when we sent a copy into the thing, it's the drawn out plan which shows our house without the deck, which is 25 feet. And then there is another one that has the 3D print of our house and that actually has, our house was originally supposed to have a covered deck on the back of it. We bought our house as a short sale, so my assumption is they ran out of money and tried to save, tried to save money there. Right here, do you guys have a copy of that?
Yep.
The picture of it? That shows the back view and the front view? Yes. So it initially is supposed to have a covered deck and I guess we're just asking for favor of the board to allow us the two feet to, to add the value to our home, the value to Brandon, for safety reasons for our deck, because it does need to be replaced.
Anybody up here have any questions or comments?
Uh, you said it's a safety issue. Is this thing going to fall down or what?
Well, it is starting to lean away from the house and it's built in 2004 and so we have, you know, tried to upkeep it, staining and varnishing and stuff, and it is leaning away. The poles you can see are kind of starting, the braces on the bottom are.
Do you feel comfortable having guests over on that patio?
I don't know if we'd have too many more people than what our family is for.
Right.
You know? Well, we, we had a couple steps replaced a while back, a couple of years ago, and the contractor at that time said, you guys are going to have to keep an eye on it. You might, you're going to have to replace that in, in a few years and now we're coming up to that point, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any que, go ahead, Rob.
I do see on the plan, on the backside of it, it says covered, on the actual floor plan, it says covered deck 14 by 12 on the main floor.
We explain a little more, I think I know what you mean, but.
Okay.
For other people who may not, when you said about 25 feet, you're talking about.
So from the back of our house, without the deck, we meet in the variance of that 25 feet.
So you have 25 feet between the edge of your house in the backyard to the property line?
Correct.
And so how far is the back of the deck to the property line right now?
So 25 feet and we have 12 feet.
13 feet.
13 feet.
I wrote it today, I wrote it today as 13 feet.
13. And if they made it two feet bigger.
It'd be 11.
11.
And just to note, and I don't know, you probably have those copies. We went around to all of our neighbors and we did ask them.
Yep.
They sent a letter in stating they don't care. And also, we took pictures and I think Paul was out as well. Yes, took pictures. Honestly, we don't even close our blinds and our back neighbors don't even close their blinds because there's so many trees, we can't see each other anyway.
I drove past your house yesterday and I couldn't see the deck from the front.
Right.
So I went around to the other street, tried to peek between the houses and I still couldn't see it. But a lot of trees.
Yeah, and it's beautiful a week out of the year because they're all flowered, so.
Um, Paul? What do we currently allow a deck to be off of the property line, an uncovered deck?
25 feet.
The deck itself has to be 25 feet off the property line as well?
Yes. Unless it's only a foot off the ground. If it's 12 inches or less, it can be within five feet. But this one's obviously more than a foot, so 25 feet from the rear of, of the deck.
I don't suppose you remember when we changed that in the zoning code?
No, it's.
No.
It has varied under 10 years I've been here.
Yes.
I think at one time it made a switch and it went back.
Okay. Because these plans look like they were approved in 2003, so it might have been after that that we made that change? Okay. Does anybody else up here have any comments for the applicants? Go ahead, Brian. Just push that.
Well, just to confirm, there was no variance, conditional use, anything like that back when the permit was pulled?
No, sir.
So when this house was built, I would assume that it met the, the zoning codes that were in place at the time the house was built?
Yes, sir.
I would assume. Yes. Yes, Alyssa?
So this, so at, now at this time, it would be considered a nonconforming use?
Correct.
Would that be correct? Kind of like the dentist's office we just talked about?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
You can shut that off. There you go. Go ahead, Brian.
If it's a nonconforming use, it's setback variance. The use is fine. It's just the distance to the setback.
So what does city ordinances, what does the law tell us that we need to take into
You have that whole checklist where you have to run through, find the hardship and all that.
We have a checklist.
And I'm wondering to, being it was at this time to be grandfathered in, because honestly, I was shocked when I went in and said, she's like that speed. And then I went in and talked to Paul and he gave me an aerial view of the cul-de-sac, which our neighbors across the street kind of have that same issue. I think it's just where we fall on that cul-de-sac. To be, what? Yeah, and Paul.
The house is big enough for the lot.
Right. And he at that time looked at me, which I kind of like was what? He said, yeah, he goes, don't let your house burn down or blow away because we wouldn't let you rebuild your house because it's too big for the lot. So asking to be grandfathered in because we can't move our house, we can't, so.
Do you have a copy of that checklist, by the way? It's not in the packet. By chance? I don't want to take your only copy, though.
Well, if it just.
Okay, you guys ready? Yeah, Brian.
Before we go through this, Mr. Clerk, so the reason this is here is because they're changing the structure, correct? If they were keeping the structure of the deck and redoing the railing or the deckboards or something like that, this would be a non-issue.
Right. If an applicant came in and wanted to do repair and maintenance to X percentage of it, then we would have no permit and just move forward. But they want to completely take it down.
Can you also explain why we decided on a 25-foot setback for a backyard?
I don't have a complete answer. It was, it was the planning commission.
Yep. I assume it had something to do with look and feel the neighborhood, probably privacy, probably fire responsiveness, all of that.
Right.
Right? Okay. Does anybody else have any questions up here, thoughts or concerns? If not, so this unfortunately is a very laborious process getting a variance because we're essentially going against our zoning ordinances. If we, if we decide to grant it, we'd be going against our zoning ordinances. It's not necessarily an easy thing to do, but here we go. An unnecessary hardship refers solely to the particular physical condition of the property, not any personal or self-inflicted hardship of its owner, financial or otherwise. The hardship must be substantial and of compelling force, not merely for reasons of convenience or profit, but must render the ability of the use of the land unfeasible without the variance. Brian, you want to help me with this one? I mean, we typically make arguments, and we'll get to it later, about, um, on item number F, uh, let's see, where are we at here? On A, item H, when it says the exceptional and extraordinary circumstances that apply to the property, that do not apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity that may result from a lot, size or shape, topography or other circumstances, which are not of the applicant's making. That's hard because the, the, the house probably should have never been built on the lot to start with.
That. And the house is probably overbuilt for the lot. However, you know, typically a hardship is defined as something that's topographical in nature, associated with.
Yep.
The lot itself. You know, if there's a ravine or an odd shape, which I know has been used before for a deck on a cul-de-sac for a variance, you know, if it's a weird shaped lot, for instance, we granted a variance for B and G for their sign because they've got that weird corner lot and they didn't have enough frontage for the sign. So topographical in nature, it's got to be associated with the lot, not necessarily the build. The building doesn't really come into play. It's the lot, the shape of the lot.
Not the building that's on the lot, the lot itself. So does anybody else up here have any thoughts about what we've just listed?
Can I say something?
Hmm, hold on. Anybody up here? Go ahead, Jenna.
So I.
Come on up and come to the microphone, give your name and address, please. Yes?
Jenna Close.
Thank you.
114 North Country Club Avenue in Brandon. I was just thinking about how they were describing their backyard and if you don't grant them this, the deck they have already doesn't comply with the 25 feet. So basically, if you don't let them do this, it's unsafe and they'd have to close in their sliding door? Is that kind of what I'm hearing? Like, because it's not 25 feet no matter what, right?
What I understand is that if, with the way the, the code is now, if we have to take down the deck and replace it, we'd need a variance anyway.
Right. So that's.
Is that, is that correct, Paul?
More than 50% right, is it?
Which, they said it's tipping away from their house, so.
Yep.
It would have to come down. So even to be, even to rebuild what they have, wouldn't comply.
Yep.
And they'd need this, so.
Okay. So when and if we do grant a variance, it essentially changes the zoning ordinance or the zoning code and therefore allowing anybody in any district to have the exact same variance. Yes? No?
No.
So we, we, we take the variances pretty seriously because we understand that if we do grant one, we have to look at rewriting the entire zoning ordinance.
Truthfully, I think I have the same problem.
So we, these are basically a checklist that was put together by our city attorney as rules for us to follow in granting variances. So go ahead.
I'll make some comments here.
Go ahead.
So I don't know what, I don't know what the ordinance was back when the house was built, so I can't make comments on that. But the front of the house also encroaches on the 25-foot setback, but we're not, that's not part of what we're talking about here today.
Brian, can you speak up? Please speak into the microphone. We can't hear you, I don't.
There you go. So as I mentioned, the house in question encro, also encroaches on the front yard per our current ordinance of 25-foot setback. But I can't speak to what the ordinance was back when this building permit was pulled, so I don't, I don't know what the rear setback was. In my opinion, if we deny this, the applicant could, through multiple phases, replace the existing structure. You know, one board at a time, replace it without a, without a permit. I would be, I personally would be okay with replacing the deck as it is now. No expansion and no covering it.
The, the original plans had a cover. The original plans had a covered deck that was approved by the, whatever the zoning.
I, I, I don't disagree with that. I, like I said, I don't know what the ordinance was when this was approved. This is, that building permit has now been null and void and no longer applies, so. So you now have, now that you're doing construction, you need to comply with current ordinances. That's just, that's just, you know, the facts of life, so.
Brian, Patrick, Paul, anybody? What are your thoughts on that in terms of, when it comes to replacing the current structure that's there because it was built in its place? I do realize that we have grandfathered things all over the city. If they do get replaced, we do make them come into current zoning ordinances, zoning
You are allowed to maintain and repair now.
You are allowed to maintain and repair non-conforming uses.
You're allowed to maintain and repair them, yes. You just cannot expand them.
You cannot take it down more than 51% because that is considered destroyed.
Yes.
Brian, I remember another case similar to this, and you explained it really well about the 50% thing, and it, in order to do what that person wanted, they did not need a variance, but they needed two building permits. Can you explain that process, please?
Sure, it's fairly common, especially on decks that, that are non-conforming uses. As long as you don't destroy it by any means, whether it's fire, tornado, or demolition, as long as you don't destroy the deck by more than 51%, you can fix 50% of it, give a second building permit and fix the other 50%. And it's been done a few times.
Yes, it took four, five hours.
Now, is that for just fixing it the way it stands now, so it still looks exactly the same when you're done?
Correct.
Okay, it's not for making it bigger or-
Like Paul said, you can't-
Yeah.
You can repair, maintain, but you can't expand a non-conforming use. So, like I said, we've had four, five, half dozen, I don't know how many, I don't want to say it's common, but that's how folks get around decks.
Does the 50% apply to just the deck, or does the 50% apply to the house and the deck and the garage?
We've looked at the deck as an individual.
So, you look, you look at the deck as a standalone? Okay.
Because that's the non-conformity.
Does anybody else got any thoughts?
Just a comment, you had mentioned that, you know, this was drawn with the plan of a covered deck, and I see that, and that's, I see that that was there. Unfortunately, just in my opinion, looking at the ordinances, if that had been built at the time, then you could be in a similar situation that even though it's out of compliance, you could maintain that structure, but in my opinion, I do agree with the fact that I don't, I don't see the ability to expand and make that more non-conforming, but there is, I think you do have some room to explore maintaining what you have currently, that's my opinion.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
Before we entertain a motion-
Yes, sir.
As I've stated, I'm, I'm willing to accept duplicating it, replicating it in its current size and condition without a cover. However, we would have to hear from the applicant if they would be willing to modify their application accordingly. You know, I'll, I'll play my cards, I'll, I'm going to say I'm going to vote nay to approving it as, as it sits right now.
I am wondering, you guys are, so, we're already not following with the, the ordinance, so I'm wondering if we keep, if we kept the 12 feet, we can't go any further than, and expand it to the 14 by 14 that we want it to, so can we keep the 12 and stay at that distance from our backyard neighbor and extend the length of it then to 12 to 14? You know-
Make it wider.
Wider. Not deeper, but wider, like a 12 by 14 or 12 by 16.
I mean, we'd be in the same place, right? Essentially. In, in your opinion, Paul, and this is an opinion, would you say that, that decks of this nature are commonplace in the city of Brandon? I mean, is this something that is-
There are certain streets that we've come upon that a deck does not meet the current 25-foot setback. This would be in the greater neighborhood of where that's occurring or has occurred.
Okay.
And as Mr. Reed said, we've tackled it by doing the 50%, 50% rule-
Yep.
-with the decks, but certainly not allowing an expansion and making it more non-compliant.
I'm going to advise the board here to be very cautious because we did deny a very similar application on the west side of town about a year ago.
Yep. So, I ask the question, Paul, because if it is something that we think is common, because we know that cedar decks eventually have to be replaced, they, they all fall apart sooner or later, and maybe this is more of a question for Patrick, is there any way that we can write into our zoning ordinances the ability to replace and/or repair an existing deck that is non-conforming because we think that it's possibly something that is common? I know we look at this when we look at other, like older parts of town, when we've looked at setbacks, we've looked at trying to make accommodations for things that we think may be occurring rather-
I wouldn't say it's common, I mean, this is a rarity, but it has occurred before.
Yep.
It's more rare.
We can explore, if you want to make an exception to non-conformity for a deck. We can explore the topic.
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily want to see additions, I wouldn't want to see the houses expanded, but if we're looking at just replacing an existing deck that is, that is non-conforming, because otherwise I do see a, a, variances coming in. Now, this is, of course, assuming that everybody who replaces a deck is getting a building permit.
To get back to the previous question, expanding the deck two additional feet east-west, we have, we have allowed that on non-conforming uses because you're not making the, the non-conformity any worse.
Okay. But as our zoning ordinance currently sits, they, they couldn't do that unless they did the 50 and 50, you know, take 50% off, replace 50%, that kind of thing. They couldn't just tear the whole deck off and replace the whole deck at one time.
We have allowed it passed.
Right.
We have, like I said, we have had exceptions where, as long as they're not going from 12 feet from the property line to 10 feet from the property line, if they expand it out the same distance from the property line, we've allowed that because they're, they're not increasing the non-conformity.
Okay.
So, my question is, if they were to choose to do that 50 and 50, which would require two building permits, then they would not need a variance?
Correct.
They would not need a variance? So, they could cancel their variance quest, requests for tonight?
No, I mean, the, the-
Or we would have to vote on it.
There's no reason to cancel it from the applicant's point of view. The Board of Adjustment needs to make a motion to either grant or deny the variance. If it's approved, they go ahead and, and do with what they asked. If it's denied, they could come in tomorrow and, and get-
Get a building permit.
For-
Okay, but we would still have to vote on it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Whether approved or denied, I would like to see that discussion on an upcoming P and Z agenda and see if we can find some language for that, just in case. Okay? Yeah?
I would have to agree with Brian, I don't see any, uh, God, what's the word? Hardship. I don't see any hardship, and we have denied ones before because there is no hardship with the land, doesn't slope, doesn't, again, I would, to do that 50-50 thing you talked about, I would have no problem with that, but I don't see a hardship.
Okay.
With, with the shape of the lots, it's a cul-de-sac, I know cul-de-sacs aren't exactly unique in town, but it is on a cul-de-sac.
Yep.
So, it's an odd shaped, like I said before, it's been used before.
And I just have a question as you guys are discussing this. So, if you let us do the deck and, you know, we keep that 12 foot, what is, if we go up and add a roof, add a roof to that, I'm just asking what difference that makes? If we add the roof, because it's not going out any further, if we stay at that 12-foot line and just do a 12 by 14 or 12 by 16, what, what does the roof line have to do with, if we're not getting any closer to that, breaking that variance to add that roof?
Brian, you want to explain that? Covered decks versus uncovered decks?
It, one of the reasons for setbacks is sightlines for neighbors, whether it's a side yard, a front yard, backyard, it's density, it's airspace, it's those, those types of things, and the intent is to allow that airspace, line of sight to neighbors adjoining properties, those kinds of things. So, that's one of the reasons why we have setbacks, it's also a safety issue, but particularly in, in the rear yard, it's, it's line of sight for your neighbors. So, by adding additional structure higher up above the deck, encroaches into that airspace. So, in my mind, that would be increasing the, the non-conforming component more so than just the deck of what, what you have right now.
Because we would be at this-
It'd be less, it wouldn't be as high as the rest of our house.
Right, and honestly, it wouldn't approach on anything because our sightline isn't going to change and their sightline isn't going to change because we're keeping the deck at the same height, so just to add a cover on it-
But the sightline above the deck, what's happening above the plane of the deck now is also encroaching into that, into that area.
So, if I'm hearing you right, so them looking at our roof would be an encroaching on their sight?
Paul, what, what is the difference in, in the building codes between a covered and uncovered deck?
Well, there'd be more of a structural load, so we engineer for that mixture.
Okay, is there any, any fire safety concerns with a covered structure versus an uncovered structure?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. I think we need either a motion, I think we need a motion. Yeah, this is the fun part, isn't it?
Well, basically, all we have to, we can only act on what is presented here since there's no modification, so it's either a yes or no, correct?
Correct.
This is not like a conditional use.
No, it's not a conditional use. Correct.
This is not a recommendation, this is-
Correct.
-the Board of Adjustments, so.
Yep.
I'm not seeing a hardship, I'm going to make a motion to deny the application.
Motion to deny?
I'll second it.
And a second? Motion to deny and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
May I ask for one clarification?
Sure.
If we want to just replace the existing structure-
Yep.
-but want to go two feet wider, we can just go do it with two building permits. We don't need to come back for a variance or anything like that and pay 100, 350 bucks to go through this again. Is that correct?
Doesn't it have to stay the same? You can't make it bigger with replacing it, right?
Right, it has to stay the same.
Okay, I thought I heard Mr. Reed say-
Yep, 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 yep. Yep.
We just can't encroach on the property line any further than this now.
Correct.
You could work with city staff on that because then that's not a question of our purview, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You do have the right to appeal your denial to the city council, you would just have to let the city know within five working days, so that's weekdays, and that is in the zoning ordinance section 15 dash 20 dash 5. So, if you wanted to appeal their decision to the city council, you have the right to do so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn Board of Adjustments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will now reconvene the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we'll start with item number 12, the Aspen Ridge Development Preliminary Plans. Yep. Come on up and let us know what you'd like to do.
Russell Atkins.
Want to push the button on the front? Yeah, there we go. There you go, thank you.
Russell Atkins, 8304 South Timber Oak Circle, Sioux Falls.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission, here tonight to share with you our preliminary plans for Aspen Ridge addition. We did the concept plan here a week or so ago. Before I get started, I do want to say that we held a, a community meeting where we invited people from the neighborhood around. It's the first of several that we're going to be doing. We had the first one here last Tuesday, we had some people show up that had some comments and, and some good comments, and so what we've done, all of our partnership group was there, the main team, we documented all of the concerns that were expressed, we gave them the commitment that we would put our heads together and see what we could do. We started that, that evening, we're continuing on that as a partnership group. We do have meetings scheduled with city staff on Monday that will be going through those, actually every single one of the comments, whether we're able to do anything or not. We also have a setup on Tuesday to sit with our engineering group to go through the same process. We will be scheduling further community meetings to visit with them, share with them all the findings, and have further discussions. So, with that being said, I am very pleased to present the preliminary plans here. You know, I, I started construction and development over 30 years ago. I'm proud of that, and then also it's like, oh my goodness, how long has that been? And one thing that, that has happened over that time is I've learned a lot of things, and early on in my career, I was kind of focused just on what I was working on, and then as I've kind of gone through it, learned my lessons, licked my wounds, got better, I realized that I need to be looking at it more globally. I need to look at things as, for the better good. That's how we've structured our development company, Christian Development Company, which we've already shared, we are locally owned and we're owner operators, and we do believe in enriching lives and communities through smart and responsible development. And one of the things that, that I've seen in our industry over time is what is responsible development? And, you know, cities have learned those same lessons that I've learned as an individual, and they've set back and they've done things, and then they've come up with, you know, comprehensive plans where they take a lot of things into, into play, not, not just for today, but for tomorrow. And I believe a little over eight years ago, City of Brandon adopted the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and in it, you've got several things that, that you're trying to achieve. I do believe, and we'll walk through this plan here, where we're checking the boxes of, of those items that you're attempting to accommodate and, and achieve. So, Patrick, if you don't mind scrolling, yeah, keep on going down to the overall site plan.
Page 43.
There we go.
There we go.
And again, I know some of this is regurgitating of information, but if you'll bear with me, we do have Aspen Boulevard, which is a major arterial through the area, and the comp plan does show it to be the location of general business on the corner. I do believe that there's more general business also planned on the northeast corner as well and southeast corner. You also have East Chestnut Boulevard, which is a minor arterial that we would be extending. We're, we're not proposing just a half road in that location for a smaller right-of-way. We've asked for two full lanes so that we would not be one lane of traffic, and then if somebody's got a large truck, you'd have to scoot over on the side of the road. This is two full lanes of traffic there. We also have collectors going through the middle of the project. We also have collectors going through the middle of the project. We are also buffering that general business on the corner with density that becomes less dense as it gets away from the general business, also part of the comp plan and the focus. What you'll also see, multiple types of dwelling units, also part of the comp plan of, of bringing different housing structures for different people during different stages of their lives, and different income levels. We've accomplished that with roughly 6.7 acres of R3. We have an R2 structure there, or a lot, excuse me, that is 10 acres, that would be for townhomes in the R2 zoning. We do have 56 lots at the southeast that are dedicated for single-family detached villas, patio homes, but they're in the R2. We have 11 duplex lots, also in the R2 structure. And again, from that corner of Aspen Boulevard and East Chestnut, we're trying to decrease density as we come in as a buffer. We have 69 single-family lots. The other thing that we're very, very proud of, and very happy with, and also part of your comp plan, is an included city park. It's just under 14 acres. We will be proposing a splash pad, as well as pickleball courts, kind of a trail through the area. We've nestled the city park so that it can protect wetlands that are on that south boundary line. Again, part of the comprehensive plan, knowing how valuable wetlands are in the area, and how valuable they are to nature. We're protecting our, our area there, not developing that area. We've got a couple of things that we're handling from sanitary sewer. We've got a private lift station that we've been in contact and conversations a lot between our engineer and city staff, that we're feeling, making a lot of headway in, in that regard. We've got storm sewer, or storm system, which would be picking up some of the storm coming underneath, not some, all the storm coming under Aspen, would be picked up in a pipe. It would be directed eastward down Chestnut, then it would be deposited in a water control pond there at the south part of the park area, such that it could be controlled release of that storm, hoping that that would add some relief, if you will, once some improvements are done on Aspen Boulevard for the cul-de-sac, or the culvert that's under it. With that, I'd open up questions, and/or comments.
Brian, do you want to go, or you want city staff to go?
Just for the crowd in the room, just where we are in the process, so, at the last planning and zoning meeting, they submitted a comp plan, and that passed through planning and zoning and city council. That concept plan is kind of a discussion, we look at it, we make some recommendations, how things will work. So it's kind of a formal but informal discussion of their project. So, now we're at the preliminary plan stage, that is more of a general approval of layout, drainage patterns, kind of an overall look at zoning, does it work, do the lot sizes work? That kind of thing. So, the next step after that would be, this is not the rezone, this is not set the zones, there still would be a rezone down the line. And I'm sure you, I sent a letter out, so you probably might have received that by now, I sent, yep. So, sent that out, so, that should have the rezone dates on there, so that is coming up in July, so, if you haven't received it yet, it'll be a City of Brandon envelope to you, so...
Only a few of us received it.
Yep, we send them out to people within 300 feet, so that is nine property, that is 10 properties. So, that is what our ordinance requires us to do.
Whoa, 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 easy now.
That is what our ordinance is, that is, currently it is going into effect, it is not in effect yet, we sent those out as a courtesy, because they, it will go in effect, so...
So, the 300-foot notices that we send out are something that we, as a city, did. State law does not require this. This is something above and beyond state law that we have put in place for rezones, conditional uses, and variances. All state law requires us to do is put a sign on the property. So, that is why only a few people got the letters.
And to clarify, it's 300 feet within the city limits?
Correct.
Correct. So, there is still a rezone coming, this is just a general approval of the items contained in the preliminary plan. And, should this meet planning and zoning's expectations, it still would go to the city council, so this is not the end of the road.
All right, that being said, do we have any questions for the developer? Go ahead, Thomas.
The extension of Chestnut Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
As I go by that property, I live on the east side of Brandon, I go by that property every day, and there's a high voltage line going right down the middle of where you're planning to put Chestnut Boulevard. What's going to happen to that?
We've actually surveyed all those power lines. They don't really run down the middle, they're offset, I forget the actual footage, but there was some forethought placed in where they go. Believe it or not, they're all in the tree lawn that would exist between back of curb and a sidewalk along that Chestnut Boulevard. If some need to be relocated, for whatever reason, we would have, relocate those.
Okay, anybody else up here have any questions for the developer? Go ahead, Brooks.
You, you mentioned that you're now planning Chestnut to be a, I think that was the difference from when you discussed this preliminary for, that Chestnut you're planning to be a wider...
We've always planned to have the, the, it's a 100-foot right-of-way, instead of the shallow, the more shallow right-of-way for arterial. To do that, we, we chose to do that such that the half-road section on land that, which we could control, would give two full lanes of traffic. Because if you go to the smaller section, a half-road, you don't get two full lanes, and it makes it pretty awkward there.
Okay, all right.
Okay, anybody else up here have any questions?
I, yeah, I, I heard you mention East Chestnut a couple times, but, are you talking about...
I'm not as sharp as I used to be, it's South Chestnut.
South Chestnut?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is on the east side of your proposed development?
It borders the east on a section line that would be extending South Chestnut Boulevard south.
And you get into the development on the south end of that, right?
Looks like it, East Gunner Street, yes.
East Gunner Street, down the bottom, there, and then you can get into the development, how else?
There's East Christianson Street.
That one there?
Yes.
And that would be off of Chestnut, right?
It would, and that would be an 80-foot right-of-way.
Okay. Any other ones? This one up here, off of, off of Aspen?
That's South Country Avenue, yes.
South Country Avenue, thanks.
And we are anticipating a right turn in for the R3 in the northeast, and the general business would need access there off of South Chestnut. The traffic study contemplated two right-turn lanes on eastbound Aspen Boulevard, both of which we're proposing to do part, as part of our development.
Okay. Anybody else up here have any questions? Go ahead, Brian.
So, I guess, first of all, just one comment, probably for the audience, this does comply with the comprehensive plan, which we are bound to follow. That comprehensive plan is quite old, and we're currently working on a new one, but it does, it does follow the intent of what is in place and, and what we are to follow. So, I do have a question, this is currently outside the city limits, correct?
That is correct statement.
Annexed in?
That's the plan.
Okay.
It's annexed pending sale.
Yes.
At the request of the land sellers.
Yes.
And, so, as part of that annexation process, control of the highway goes to the city? So the city would have determination of the two new curb cuts on the highway?
That's probably a Tammy question, but I believe so.
Go ahead, ask the question again, Brian.
So, as, as this gets annexed into the city, does, my, my understanding is the south half of the highway is currently under the county control?
It is.
The north half is city controlled, the city maintains it, but the curb cuts would have to go through the appropriate authority having jurisdiction, so if this is annexed, the two curb cuts become the approval of the city and not the county?
That's how it has been working in the past, we would still have to accept it from the county. But yes, it is under county's jurisdiction right now. And, we have an agreement with the county, so we do some of that maintenance, but it is still the county's road.
Okay, but if it's annexed, then the city says thumbs up to the two new access points, correct?
Yes.
And we don't, and we don't have to get the county involved in that. I mean...
We work pretty close with the county.
The location makes perfect sense, but yeah.
Yeah, we work pretty close with the county, so the county would sign off on it, they'd still have to get an access permit from the county and...
At what point on that road, Tammy, does the city's jurisdiction end and the county's start? Right at the bridge?
I think it's the bridge.
And then, from the bridge heading east, that's currently all a county road?
Correct.
I do have one concern with the traffic layout, and that's the dead end on, I gotta, I gotta zoom in here.
Well, it's not East Chestnut, we know that.
Alexa Lane?
Alexa Lane, oh, okay.
Where it dead ends at the, at the R3. We got a 300-foot dead-end street there, with no...
Sure.
No ability for emergency vehicles or maintenance vehicles to turn around on a cul-de-sac.
I think the goal there, and we'll, we'll definitely work with city staff, the goal there is to give access to R3 that's not off of Aspen Boulevard, also the general business.
I understand that.
Sure.
The city will have to run snowplows up there.
Okay.
And I don't think we want snowplows turning around on, on private property.
Okay.
What do you guys, what are your thoughts on that one? Do we have examples of that in the city currently? Is it a concern when it comes to snow removal? Would we just as soon Alexa Lane be a private road?
That's what jumps to my mind fairly quickly.
I understand, but this is, this is a public right-of-way, that the city will be responsible for maintaining it, and not, not have them drive in or through.
Tammy, what do you think about that? If we took Alexa, that east Alexa Lane, and turned it into a private drive? And then the city would not be responsible for maintaining that small portion of, that road?
Well, we certainly could. I mean, you could have it as a private road if you'd like.
It could be a private road, or it could be part of Track 3. And then whoever builds and owns Track 3...
We just put an access easement over those parts.
Or it becomes an access easement, and they figure out who maintains it.
Sure, I don't...
Does that make sense?
Brian, yeah. Brian, I don't see a problem with that, and probably a better, better use there, anyway.
And then just a couple minor things, it appeared that there's a couple of cul-de-sac properties that might be under the 50-foot minimum width in the R2 area?
You have an eagle eye, and you're correct. I spoke with engineering, we will be adjusting those.
Okay.
The, the villa product there oscillates between a 52 and a 56-foot lot. We drew them just for ease until further negotiations are finalized on the site plan for that area at 54. The ones that don't meet the 50-foot frontage will be fixed.
So, here again, I kind of minor, minor issue.
It, it seems like you might work in this industry.
And then, my last...
Really?
My last comment was, some of the lots, basically the lots on that northwest corner that, but against Track 2, the grading plan shows, shows kind of a high point in the middle of the lot, half the drainage flowing to the street, half the drainage flowing to the backyard. But the existing drainage plan shows everything flowing away from Track 2.
So what we've got is, we've got some drainage coming from Track 2 onto our site that's historical. The plan is to pick that up with a flared-in section, and then pipe it over to a wall to control. Planned there, I could point, but that's not going to do much good. So the, the, the small water control area, the one on the west side that, that goes up towards East Christianson Street, that's where that storm would ultimately go.
I'm looking at sheet, this is more surface drainage, not piped drainage, so page 45 in the, in the book, in the packet. So if you look at the, the proposed topography, there's a high point in the middle of those lots that are kind of in that upper corner.
Which I think is why we piped this storm.
But, but that's flowing back onto Track 2.
Trent, are you there where you can...
Yeah.
Give the true engineering...
You brought help?
I know, I have to.
Very good.
Trent Bruce, DGR Engineering.
Hello?
Yeah, the, Russ was explaining that correctly, the, the drainage associated with the adjacent property, we had to work through that and, and be able to capture that and, and make that happen, so the, the topography, the proposed topography allows us to address all of that and pick up the drainage that comes through there and reroute it in a way that we can still maximize the use of the property, and yet still address all of the drainage accordingly. The developer has been in touch with the neighboring property and ran this process, what we're planning to do there by them, and had some discussions, so that has all been coordinated and discussed. Ebet?
Okay, any other questions from up here? You have more? No? 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 Anybody out in the audience would like to address this, if you would come up and state your name and address for the record?
TJ Cameron, 2821 East Abrik Circle, Brandon. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I know this is a pretty big development. I've talked to some of my neighbors, and I know they've expressed some concerns regarding the compliance to the comprehensive plan. I've studied it quite a bit, and it does call that area out to be residential, it doesn't necessarily classify that almost 50% of the property would be R2 or R3, so I suggest that's, that's, you know, double-checked. It does call out the, you know, the park, park plans and small, if I were to estimate, 10% or less being commercial, but it definitely doesn't separate residential from multi-unit residential. And when I look at our current zoning map, I'd have some concerns about the density of the multifamily. Now, while it shows plots of being potentially single-family units on the bottom right corner there, there, looks like they're requesting that to become R2, so when you look at the mix of our city's current growth and our current existing zoning, they're asking for nearly 50% of the property to be res, multi-use, or multi, either medium-density or high-density residential versus single-family, as well as commercial. And when you look at the mix of our city map, if you had that handy, it's around 10%. So I just wonder why the density. I truly believe we need some mix here in Brandon, but I also think, and this is my personal comment, that, you know, the current layout of the city does deserve some respect of how our current city is laid out from a mix of multifamily to single-family units. I mean, I'm a supporter of this development and annexation into the city overall, but the other comment I wanted to make was it sounds like we notified people within 300 feet, if this is in Minnehawke County, I don't know, this isn't necessarily conditional use, conditional use permit, but I know Minnehawke County has different rules, and I don't know where it applies and where it doesn't. But I know it's 500 feet, when it's in Minnehawke County, if it's not yet annexed, I don't know if that's a conditional use permit or a zoning thing, but it's a, it's a larger radius. If somebody wouldn't have put in the note on my door, I wouldn't be here tonight, even though a few different residents told me to come in a week or two. Because that's, I guess I had one other comment, and I only have just a couple minutes here, but I tried to stay specific here. The comments, it looked like I, I took a note, and I missed one of them, but it was 6.7 acres of high-density, I believe that was the right reference, that one I didn't catch what he commented, 10 acres of R2, 56 single-family units, but asking that to be in R2, 11 duplex, 11 duplex lots in R2, and then 69 lots for single-family. So if I add up those single-family and duplex alone, that's 67 units of single, I mean... So if I add up those single-family and duplex alone, that's 67 units of single, I mean, I'm sorry, of duplex plus single-family that they're asking to be R2. They're asking it to be R2, they have flexibility there. I also had a little bit of a concern. I live not too far off Chestnut, and I see that the neighboring property, they're requesting about to take out his house. I see that they're allocating space on their development, but with the future plans at Chestnut, I just noticed it runs right up against that gentleman's house. If you zoom in on that, it's literally taking his house out almost, so. And also, I happen to have a business that is not too far off there. It's not relevant to this, I'm on a different lot. But there are multiple pins in that corner of Chestnut there. There's a stockwell engineering pin in the road that I believe, and I, I'm not an expert, but it seems to me that it's a right-of-way, uh, right-of-way pin. There's another pin that varies from that, that's on the corner where that purple is on the top right, that's a property line pin. And I'm curious where their surveyors measured from, just from a personal perspective, out of respect for whoever lives in that house there. So, that's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello?
Hello? Go ahead and push that button that says "talk." There you go.
Lisa Germstead, Joe Germstead, 512 South Country Club. We actually live right across the highway. We respect what's going on. We're not opposed to growth of Brandon. I grew up in Brandon, I went to school with Brian, I've known Alicia forever. We built our house 18 years ago on the golf course. And we don't want a gas station and apartment across the street from us. The traffic already coming out of South Country Club is crazy. You can't turn off a South Country Club in the morning. Your Aspen and Split Rock corner can't handle any more traffic coming out of there. And how many cars did you guys figure would be coming out of that area? Water and sewer, we are on the, when we built, we were the last one to build down on the south, and so we did get on with the golf course water. So we don't have issues, but on our neighborhood Facebook page, some of these people up here, you'll see comments. Anybody got water pressure? We don't got any water pressure. So already, there's a water issue. Everybody knows that with Brandon. Again, we're not opposed to it. And as we told them the other night, we went to, to a meeting, turn that, put the gas station and the daycare down on Chestnut. Make, we're in a nice neighborhood. There's a golf course across the street. It's the most beautiful golf course in South Dakota. Why bring apartments and gas stations across from a beautiful, beautiful golf course?
Okay. Anyone else?
Just for the commission, I did receive one phone call. Due to age, she couldn't attend, but she wished you to know she did not want apartments located there. So, just for your information.
Okay. Hope it's ready on. There you go.
Yeah, Larry McPherson, 101 South Country Club. On the, on the retail, uh, how much, could that be a liquor store?
If it can be general business, yes.
So there's no control by what you put there, right? It could be a convenience store, it could be a daycare.
It can be anything that fits in the general business zoning.
So there's no way to limit anything, as long as they apply for the license and get it?
General business has permitted and conditional uses.
Yes.
Permitted uses are general uses by right. If it is on the list of conditional uses, they have to come back to this board for special permission.
Yes.
Well, I've heard through the grapevine that there's a daycare and a convenience store, pretty, pretty serious on this already. So if they apply for a liquor license, would they get it?
If we have one. We don't have one currently.
So you'll have a 24/7, uh, business running right across from residential. And I was a kid, nothing good happens after midnight, so you're going to have a, a, a lit-up entity 24/7 right across from that whole group of homes on the, uh, the north side of Aspen. Now, I don't live right there, so, but I can see why, I don't want, I wouldn't want that lit up in my face all night. Daycare center's pretty cool, but that's, that's the comment about rotating that whole block like 90 degrees and putting everything on the commercial onto Chestnut. Because, I mean, it, it's not a destination stop that you need to see it for a daycare center, if that's what went in. Everybody knows where to find a convenience store. So that would be more palatable to the group, I believe, because we're not against the rest of it. It's just we don't really want to look at it. Because I doubt anybody here who, who's moved, you know, we're, uh, I was born and raised in, in South Dakota, went to South Dakota State, and we lived in Denver for 30 years, and we came back because of Colorado. And we didn't, we searched out our property by where we couldn't hear road noise, because road noise in, in Colorado is terrible. And it just got busier and busier and busier, to the point where that's all you heard. And Aspen will get busier, there's no doubt about it. Because you're adding, what, almost 1,000 potential people, probably in that area, at least. And they've all got to get out, they all got to get water. So there's definitely some infrastructure improvements that need to be made before this ever got filled out, I, I would, I would hope. And I guess up on the corner where the new school is going, there's another convenience store, I believe, that has interest in going in there too. So are we just going to be a, a city of convenience stores? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You just push that button, please. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello?
My name's Greg Medetsky, and I'm the resident on 2501 East Aspen. The property that's going to be directly to the east of the new road, the proposed road. As far as everybody here, you probably don't know me. But I've lived here my entire life. I worked in Brandon, and, um, I'm not against change. And, um, I waited patiently for someone to come and talk to me, to show me a plan. I've been online watching. Okay, it finally showed up, so I really haven't had time to look at this plan. But there's a couple things. Might not be important to anybody here, but, um, for me, for the, the commercial and the, and the apartments, you know, I, I understand you have to develop land along a highway or whatever for commercial use. And I probably knew this was coming someday, but there's an issue with us, for one thing, for the, we don't know about the correct property lines. And the other issue is, I have an existing well that would fall in the road right-of-way, which, would have been nice if somebody would come and visit with me and say, "Okay, how are we going to fix this?" But I just want you all to know that you are affecting people's lives with the decisions you make. And I am concerned about the water and the quality. And I just want to go on record about my lot line. I'm, I'm not 100% sure about the lot pins, and I want to get it checked out, but I'd need time. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Emile Perdy, 2117 East Pebble Beach Lane. I'm a new, a lot of people got up here, lived here all their life. I've been here one year. I moved here from north suburb of, uh, northwest of Atlanta, Georgia. The reason we decided to move here was because of what was happening in our county, which at one time had the lowest tax rate, sales tax rate in the state. Had a very low crime rate and very good schools, and that's why we lived there. Things changed, priorities changed, and the focus became accessible housing, high-density housing, among another, other changes. They now have a tax rate which is comparable to, at least with everyone else in the state. The crime rate has gone up significantly, and we decided that we had enough, and we moved here. I'm concerned to see that you're bringing apartments out here. My question is, why? I don't understand why we need to have apartments out in the country when the jobs are in the city to the north of Brandon and, and over towards Sioux Falls. I don't understand why we're putting people in apartments way far away from those things. High-density housing is because, is, is to meet a need of efficient use of land near services. I don't see this as efficient at all. I just see it as us spreading out into areas that it doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And some of the other property owners here have expressed, uh, you know, why they live where they do. I don't see how that fits here at all. But anyway, that, that's it. I'm going to try to attend to many, excuse me, as many of the other meetings as I can, because I'd like to learn more about this. I like the project. I think it's good. I just don't understand that aspect of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Karen Pick, 508 South Country Club Avenue, with my husband David.
Hello.
We are the second house in from Aspen. And I just want to point out to you guys that I know this doesn't matter to the builders, but I can sit on my deck in the morning and watch the sunrise. It's beautiful. Houses over there is different. You put an apartment building over there, and I get to sit out on my deck and look at a goddamn apartment building. Excuse my French. I don't think any of you that live in a nice area, in a nice home, would appreciate that. So I just want you to think about what you're putting over there. I'm not against the growth. In fact, maybe someday I would love to live in a villa over there and stay in the part of the city that I love. But I built a, or bought this house 19 years ago with the fact that I'm living across the street from the farmer, the land, watching the deer, and we're taking all of that away. And I know it, I know we have to have growth, I get that. But apartment buildings, a convenience store, or a gas station, or whatever it is that you want to put on that corner, when you drive a mile to the west and go to the interstate you have already, four gas stations. So if you can't drive a mile to get your gas, you've got a problem. I agree with the fact that if it gets a liquor license, we've got a lot of kids in the area. More convenient for them to go get their liquor and more chance of crime. And I just don't understand why you have to have that kind of a business area in our place. I mean, like, if it's, uh, restaurant or something nice for me to look at, fine. But... And, and put the, put the apartment buildings farther down where, and, you know, the people that are going to buy those lots, they're going to already know that that apartment building is going to affect their view. But you're taking it away from me. And I think before we talk about zoning, we need to talk about traffic and the amount of traffic. And we have a bridge to cross to get into town, and the only way to get there without a gravel road is to go on Aspen Boulevard. And no bike path, no way for our kids to get across the bridge to safely go to the swimming pool. So we've got, I feel, the city of Brandon has to grow with the city, but they also have to look at the structure of the streets and the traffic before we talk about rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, my name is Nathan Smith. I live on 316 South Country Club Avenue.
Howdy.
Unlike a lot of these people, I am not, been here all my life. I moved to South Dakota a year and a half ago. I lived and worked in downtown Minneapolis, worked, lived in the suburb, used to the traffic. What you're planning on doing here is taking me right back to rush hour Minnesota. Aspen Boulevard cannot handle any more traffic. It is atrocious trying to turn onto Split Rock Road. I actually take the gravel road all the time. It's horrible, but it's the only way to get anywhere. You can't do anything on Aspen. Now you're going to add all these things, these eyesores, everything else. The water is already horrible, there's no pressure, and now you're going to add all this other stuff. You guys are affecting my livelihood here. I have two young kids. I don't want this junk around my two young kids. I want them to be safe. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
I guess it's me again. Jana Close, 114 North Country Club Avenue. On my way here tonight, I was waiting at Aspen to turn on the Split Rock, and I had to sit there for five minutes because I couldn't turn, and that wasn't even at a rush hour. That was at, whatever, 6 o'clock before I was coming to this meeting. So that's a problem. Someone's already mentioned the bridge that we have to cross to get here. There are already "Why Die" signs on that bridge. People have already died there. And now, like, as has been pointed out, we're adding somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 more residents to this street that can't handle anything more, also going to be crossing that bridge. We haven't fixed the, what should be around about but isn't, it needs to be first. We've spent a lot of money in this town to fix up our golf course, and it's gorgeous. Like, they've done a great job with it. I think it's Andrew Bauer. He's doing a great job. Like, it's beautiful. The new patio out there, gorgeous. But we spent money on that to draw people near it, and now we're not even going to put the nice, big, beautiful homes on the side that can see it, and it just doesn't make any sense. We want to bring more, not we, I don't, they want to bring more businesses to this area, could be restaurants, could be whatever. But the golf course already has a restaurant. The city owns this, right? The city owns the golf course, so the city owns the restaurant. We're not even using the stuff that we already have, and it doesn't make sense. He said that the drainage part was, they had consulted with neighbors and whatever else. I'd like to know what neighbors, who was consulted about this. The notifications about these meetings, anything to do with this development? 10 people and a sign, but the actual sign isn't even there. When will that sign be there?
Paul, is that sign there?
For the...
We don't put a sign up?
For the rezon, there will be a sign. Yeah, there will be.
Will be, but hasn't been.
Yeah, not, not until the rezoning hearing, and 10 days before it'll be placed.
Okay, so had it not been for the nine people, I think it was, that got the letter, the rest of us wouldn't know anything about it. And then, you know, the signs, everybody's familiar with planning and zoning signs. They're eight and a half by 11, 12 by 12, maybe? If we're lucky, so I just...
They're larger than that, ma'am.
Yep.
How, oh, they go on the, the sign, the for-sale sign type thing, right? Like, the kind that you can stick in the ground? What are we looking for? What are we looking for? The for-sale sign type thing? Okay. All of these developers that are proposing this stuff, none of them live in Brandon. None of them. I asked that question at this, at the meeting on Tuesday. They come in and they really pump it up, like, "Oh, our kids are going to Brandon." They say Brandon, not Brandon Valley, by the way. "We really want our kids to be able to come back here, you know, affordable housing, dah 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 dah," whatever. But none of them live here. None of them have to live by this. And they don't, from what I understood that night, and I might not be correct on this, but what I understood that night was, none of them live by anything like this either. And it's already been brought up, but just to go on record for myself to say, the water in this town is a problem. And even when someone has a solution, an alternative for the water, the city doesn't let them do it. I know this personally, because we have two shops out by Marmon, we have two buildings out there. The rural water runs through our land. I wrote, I asked, I called, basically begged, to allow the city to let us join on to rural water, because we knew that the water was a problem. Take us off your list, like, we'll help out here. No. Wouldn't be allowed to join on rural water. And so, I don't know why we would create more consumption when we already don't allow people to take alternatives and we have a problem here. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Shane Carbonneau, 201 South Country Club Avenue. My husband Scott is here as well. I, I just wanna say, I love the fact that Brandon has a master plan that you're looking at. And I'm very happy to hear that you are looking at updating it. It's really, it, it's exciting to think about the opportunities and what can be. So, and I also think it's fantastic that there are some developers who wanna come in and, and help with that growth. The fact that there's a city park is fantastic to be part of that development. All those things are very good things. I think the questions that have been brought up are very valid. There are concerns with traffic, there are concerns with water. But there's another concern, and I, I think no one has really mentioned it yet, but the reason that you propose developments where you have the, the higher density near the busy streets is because no one is gonna wanna buy and build a six, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar home next to a busy street. I'm wondering if those same people are gonna want to build a six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar home next to a railroad track as well? If it's gonna be a working railroad track? It's just something to, I, I think that should be taken into consideration as things move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Scott Benson, 2260 East Byron Circle. Lived in this area about seventeen years now. So, I kinda follow along with what's happening in various parks. I'm retired, kinda work for fun, but past life was also watching over projects and things like this that I did in my former life. So, I actually have some more concerns. Most of them have been echoed very well by the people who live in this area, been, you know, impressed with the growth talk and things like that. These are all things that are positive for Brandon. But I am concerned about some of the general business that we're looking at there and the R2 high-density stuff. But more than anything is, you know, we talk about a half-width Boulevard for Chestnut, and, and we really need, if a proposal would like this to happen, and let's say we can remove some of that high-density housing in that area, no matter who lives here, they're gonna need another, we need another access out of this, out of this area. And it, what is a proposal for expanding Chestnut, where it goes into Redwood and things like that, to get that paved, to get another access to the interstate? Is that, is that something that's being talked about?
Yep.
I guess in part of this?
You can go to the Brandon Township meeting and let them know that you would like that road paved.
Okay. And I, that's a whole nother fight, because I'm not there, you know, with the whole annexing. I'm just asking for what your knowledge might be. Is that a proposal that they're looking at?
I don't know.
Okay. So when we talk half-width, you know, we think snow removal and things like that, we look at a couple of half-width roads during Brandon, and they don't do well in the wintertime. We can't clear snow all the way off, there's no real drainage, there's no, you know, ditches to push that snow into. So now, you are gonna force all that traffic into Country Club from whatever is proposed out of here. And Country Club is my main boulevard to get in and out of my home. So with all this high-density traffic and things that we're looking at here, I would rather see an improvement like other people have already spoken about. You know, what do we need to do to improve Aspen? What do we need to do to improve Chestnut? What do we need to do to improve Redwood? Turn-in lanes, a bridge, pedestrian bridge that takes you into the city for additional people? Those are all things that need to be looked at way ahead of some of this other stuff that's happening. So, I'm hoping that that's something that you guys are looking at as well. You know, we see the growth, support it. I'm not real big on, you know, three-story apartments, because it is a beautiful view coming around that corner. I look at plenty of sun dogs there in the wintertime. When I turn that corner, the sun's coming up, it's beautiful. So, we are changing, I, I get it. But I don't sure that it's necessarily all positive, so, thanks for your time.
Yep. Anyone else?
Can I do a follow-up?
Sure.
What, what annexation effort would take, would probably happen first? Would it be the northwest, northeast corner by Redwood and, and Chestnut? Or the application for the, for Aspen Ridge? Which, which one probably would, would happen quicker?
This one.
This one?
Yeah.
And that's because of, I, I, I don't know the whole process, so would it be because they're, they haven't started to build? Is that probably what the problem, or?
No. We did an annexation study about a year, Brian, help me out. Did we do it a year and a half ago or two years ago?
Uh, we did it, there's two types of annexation. One is voluntary annexation, which this is, and it can be done by resolution of the city council. There's a forced annexation, which we did an annexation study for the Chestnut-Redwood area northeast of town, in that the city needs to study the improvements to the infrastructure that's necessary. And quite frankly, it's very, very difficult to do a forced annexation. Without the cooperation of the property owners, annexation probably is not going to happen.
So the, so theoretically, the school could be built without annexation being resolved?
Correct, because there is a way to make the school property contingent with the city of Brandon.
Okay. So then who, who, who would improve that road if you don't annex it? Would that be the county then?
That would be the township.
It's a township road.
So, you tried to improve it from gravel to pavement?
I don't know what the township is, is planning to do. We had a proposal to urbanize that section, curb gutter, you know, turn lanes, everything else. That was fully rejected by the residents in that area. So I don't know what the lands the township has, if any, but it's, it's their jurisdiction.
So probably the school would be built and we'd be still on a gravel road until that all gets resolved. That's probably...
We, we welcome you to go to school board meetings and Brandon Township meetings.
Yeah.
Yes. We already went down that path with no success. So...
Well, I don't have any kids anymore, so, but I can see, it, it's tough, especially when it's, when it's wet. You know, it's bad enough when it's dry, 'cause it's, it's like an old country road, but, so, all right, thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, anybody up here have any other questions, concerns, thoughts, questions for the developer? Thoughts about anything that was just said? Anyone? Go ahead, Thomas.
Tammy. When is the new water treatment plant coming online and the new water tower here at the end of Chestnut?
So, the water tower's being painted now. So we are still hopeful for mid-July sometime for that being painted, and then we can start the testing of it. I'm gonna guess that we're gonna be fully using it in August.
And that should improve the water pressure on east Brandon?
Yep. So right now, we have a booster station, and there is a lot of fluctuations in the pressure on the east side of town. Once we have that tower in, they will have improved pressure. And then the water treatment plant, that should be online the end of 2025.
And that will increase our capacity by how much?
It will double.
Double our capacity?
And the quality.
And we're adding an RO system to soften it?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Anyone else have any questions or concerns up here? So, preliminary plan, if this is passed or denied, if it's passed, they build what they presented, correct?
Yes, so there's one more step they have to go through. That's the development engineering plan, so that's really the details of the water, the sewer, the storm sewer, that sort of thing. It would be, the preliminary plan needs to be formally approved by you and city council for them to start moving on to the DEPs.
Okay. And since we're all licensed engineers, we'll go through those too? Oh, no, we don't do that.
Not that city staff.
Anybody else have any questions for the developer, have any concerns? We do need a motion to either approve or deny this, correct?
There, there's one more step.
Yes, sir.
That's the rezoning.
Yep.
So the preliminary plan just is what the developer will be requesting for zoning. The actual rezoning of the property will follow the amendment process, which requires posted notice, mailed notice, a public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then another hearing in front of the city council, a second read in the ordinance. The ordinance would be published, and then it would go into effect twenty days after publication. So there's a couple more steps.
So presuming that, so this is assuming this preliminary plan is approved by Planning and Zoning as well as the city council on Monday. I have sent you the ten people properties within three hundred feet. There is the rezoning scheduled for the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing on July 6th. So then, that would follow up with the city council, I, I think that, that dates either the 10th or the 17th. It's in that letter, and we'll make sure it's on the city website. We believe it's the 17th for the city council for the rezoning. So the, the 6th, Planning and Zoning, July 17th with the city council. So if, assuming the preliminary plans are approved by Planning and Zoning and city council, those are the dates for the rezone.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Come on up.
I was just wondering, I was just wondering who's paying for the lift station? If it would get approved?
The developer? Yes?
Sorry, one more question. So if you guys approve moving forward on that tonight, is it as is, or can things change?
As far as we're concerned, this is what we're approving, yes. They will ask for a rezone, which is basically, right now it's all zoned ag, so there's no zoning there. So they would ask for a rezone to these specific zoning districts. Did I get that right? Thank you.
And I guess I would just like to say from, I've been on that side of the room a lot longer than I've been on this side of the room. A lot of developers do want some R2. This is in the middle of a field for the most part. It affects the, the least amount of people. There's always gonna be people affected. But there's a, there's a, a real desire to have some R2 in Brandon. A lot of this is villa-style, which is very desirable right now. And then there is some higher density. That has been something that's been pushed in town for a long time, but it's very hard to put R2 in existing developments, or developments that are surrounded by single-family homes. There's a big push against that. So if developers wanna put in R2 or higher density, and if this isn't it, you know, the question is where? Because there is, there is a need for, for lower-income housing, not low-income housing, but housing right now is extremely expensive. Affordable housing, not low-income, affordable. You can make a lot of money and still can't afford a town, a house in town. So if this isn't the place for it, then we, the developers are gonna have to ask themselves, where is? Commercial along a major street, there isn't, you know, we, there is a push for having commercial closer to developments to help support people in those developments. You do have to go ways to get to even sunshine from there. So the question that we have to ask ourselves is, if this doesn't make sense, what does? So I know that people will be affected, but that's the question that we have to ask.
Yes?
I guess I just was curious if you're willing to answer. So approving this preliminary design, I know it's not the zoning, but you're preliminarily approving that this goes to zoning at about over fifty percent, where in other developments, we've only had less, I don't know, ten percent of multifamily? Like, I, I live just down the street on, on Chestnut, and, and I did, and now I live just five blocks to the east of that in the suburbs of, of Country Club, I call it. But, you know, when they approve that, there's multifamily just along Aspen, but it's light duty. Does this bind them to build whatever somebody said was villas? I mean, or doesn't R2 give them flexibility to build R2-conforming properties? And second of all, just, again, I just would ask this or whatever commission to, you know, I get that there's a need. But do we go from 1090 to 5545? I mean, that seems like we're shoving it all in one spot. Maybe we could gradually increase the density in each future development versus shoving it all in one place? Just something...
What is, Twin Rivers, what's that zoned as?
R2.
All of it's, is all, majority of it's R2, Twin Rivers is.
I think the west, did we get your block number? I think the west block might be R1, but the majority of Twin Rivers is R2. The majority of, of the pond is R2, rather, the pond is all R2.
So, Tammy, let me ask this question. If we pass a preliminary plan and the lots are designated as they sit, is that what has to be developed? Or can they change the lots?
They can make minor tweaks to the lots.
'Cause I don't believe...
They still have to meet the art, whatever it's zoned.
Yeah. 'Cause I, can you get a duplex on those lots? Probably not. Probably not. So really, we're just looking at a few lots that would have duplexes? Those would be villa homes, which are essentially single-family homes? Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
I have just one comment to Michael. I appreciate your comment, but we can get to sunshine way closer than anybody from the bluffs can get to a gas station or sunshine. So we got a lot of gas stations up here, the bluffs have nothing out there. Again...
They're getting a quick star.
Yeah.
And it'll be there soon. And they're all excited.
Again, with all respect to the builder, we are not opposed to it. But turn that and put that buffer way in the back with those apartments and the gas stations. Put the nice houses up on our golf course. That's a beautiful area up there. We need a walking path, a bike path to get down into the city. We can't even get into the city. There's so many mornings that we get on the car and it, the sun is shining. You're lucky that you don't, that there has not been more deaths up there, because either coming home or going and the sun is just right and that little guy is walking the highway. I mean, I know everybody can attest to almost, and you, you're looking, it's not like you're doing anything else. But just turn that and keep our nice neighborhood.
Okay, anybody else up here have anything? Any questions, any concerns, any questions for the staff? Any questions, any concerns, any questions for the staff? Yes, sir. You're already on.
Yeah, I'm Ray Snobble, my property is on 2201 East Pebble Beach Lane, I'm a neighbor to Mia. And we moved back here about, and built a new home 15 years ago. And so we, I'm a little bit, I like the idea of developing that property, that isn't an issue in my mind. But I'm having some apprehension about the apartment complexes. And I think the one thing that I'm missing is, what are the numbers that we think that will be built, you know, in each of these blocks, the brown block, the yellow block? Nothing, nothing has been stated about that, and we talk about general numbers of 1,000, maybe or 1,500 residents, but what would that, what would that population look like? Because I think with that, with the traffic situation, I walk most every day, and I go out to Aspen and then I walk back. And the traffic is notably picked up from where it was before, so. Again, I'd like to know a little bit more about the numbers that are going to be in each of those spots.
That I don't know, do you know?
No, I have no idea.
Oh, come on up, please. You're on.
Again, Russell Atkins. We've got people who are looking at them, we've done some preliminary site plans, but until somebody actually goes under contract and actually does a site plan on their product for what they want.
Yep.
We'd have to go, to be, to be fully candid and truthful with everybody, you'd have to go to what the zoning would allow. And I can tell you that the people that are looking at it, the R3, I just hate to commit on their behalf, but you could be 130 to 150 apartments on the R3, I could see that. I used to develop apartments, so when you start looking at the cost of putting in a rec center and a pool and things like that, you have to have a certain amount of density to justify that. But again, I'm going to preface all that with saying, the buyer of that finished site would have to tell us what they wanted to put on there, they'd have to come back through all of this process, everybody would get to talk about it. As far as the townhomes, one of the reasons why we went with the R2 versus the R3, it's a, it's a lower density, they're more fourplexes, they're not the big five, seven, 15plexes that you see. There may be 100 there, it just depends on the open space and, but again, we would not be developing those structures, so I can't comment to the exact number, so it's just a speculation on my part. It's my best one that I've got.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember.
Go ahead.
One more question, maybe not, but for now. The property that is right beside, I think it's called Celebrate Church, that was up for rezoning not too long ago, right, it's on Redwood and Pasqueagaw? What did they want to do with that property?
Build apartments.
Okay, and what happened to that?
The city council decided to deny it.
Okay, and why?
I have no idea, you can ask them.
Oh, I didn't read the minutes.
I voted yes.
Michael, do you know?
It passed this group.
Do you know why that was denied?
It's now going to be, it's now been rezoned to neighborhood business, though. It's a business district now.
That development, yeah, that's neighborhood business.
So my question is, if it was denied, multifamily residential, but there's apartments right beside it, that is confusing for people like us who don't want this across from our nice houses, but those people didn't want that there either.
That backed up to existing residential, like directly backed up to?
But there's apartments like just a block away too, and there is on Aspen too, but-
But that's why I'm saying, though, it's very hard to put R2, R3 that backs up to single-family residential. There's been several developments that have tried to back up to residential with a lot of pushback. And this doesn't, and there's, there is a couple residents are to the east there, but this is ag right now.
Right.
It's across the street of one of the busiest streets in town, so if this doesn't meet that-
But don't you think that we could look at, like, this is our golf course, like this is what we want, Prairie Green or whatever, we want, don't we want to keep this, like, this desirable location and of the values and-
Most of this-
If I remember correctly, there's a big apartment on Prairie Green.
And Willa Run.
And Willa Run.
But is it right beside the nice houses?
On the golf course, there's an apartment complex.
But there's not houses right beside it?
Yeah, there is.
On Willa Run?
Yeah.
I don't know about Willa Run, but yeah.
Willa Run does, on the south side, has residential. And then, then there's a little bit of gap and then, but yeah, big, big apartment building, but anyway. And this, where the, where the business is at and the higher-density residential, you can't see the golf course. It's on the, you have to see through the clubhouse to see the golf course, and then there's a lot of green space. On the west side, you can't really get up there close enough to really build a house that would view the golf course in this development.
No.
I mean-
Okay. Anybody else have any questions up here? Come on up, sir.
William Gast, my wife and I reside at 504 South Country Club, which means we're the third house in. And we also, because of our location, have an excellent view of all the traffic that is already on East Aspen. And you're going to be adding a lot more to it, and I've had very little, I've heard very little said tonight about how you intend on handle all that additional traffic. Sounds to me like you're on the very verge of approving this preliminary plan without giving much consideration to what you're going to do with all the increased traffic. If that's not enough, I think we need to be aware, and some of us are and many of us may not be, all the truck traffic that's on that road. Most of which, in my opinion, don't deserve to be there, don't have the right to be there. One of the things you ought to consider if you're going to improve this is to how you're going to deal with all that increased traffic, including the truck traffic, that shouldn't, in my opinion, be there. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Anyone up here? Come on up.
My name is Susan Dykes, and I live at 2,300 East Pebble Beach Lane. You had just mentioned an apartment building on Prairie Green Golf Course?
Yep.
On South 69th Street. Have you been in that apartment building?
Not once.
My daughter lives there, it is actually very nice. It's an older building, I think it was built probably in the late 80s, early 90s. It is not a low-income building. There is not, it's nice and quiet, it's in a beautiful, there is houses on one side, looks, Meat Market right on the other side. Is this apartment building going to be like that, or are we looking at a low-income?
We would love, I'm sure he would love to sell you the lot, and you can build that apartment complex right there.
But is that what they're looking for? What type of apartment complexes are going to go in that area?
We're under conversations with a couple of developers to develop apartments, I'm not at liberty to tell their names, none of them are low-income or Section 8 housing.
Okay. That's one of the things.
Does that answer your question?
Part of it.
Okay.
And I mean, just looking at how Country Club is set up, has there ever been a thought of developing it just residential, like East 26th Street has? Where you have, you know, the nice, was it Copper Ridge? It's on both sides of East 26th Street. They don't have the buffer with the apartment buildings.
I'm not developing it, so.
I didn't mean to get off, but-
Go ahead.
I just wondered, why can't it just be housing? To kind of go into the same lots?
So this is what the developer is proposing, that the land becomes, it's nothing yet.
Thank you.
Yes, Patrick.
So, planning and zoning is a complicated topic. So, my job with the city is to be your city planner. I encourage you to reach out with me to discuss these things, we are currently working through the comprehensive plan process. There was a survey that was distributed to residential residents, people, citizens in the city, business owners, and land developers. We had 11 land developers respond, I believe 33 business owners and 801 residents. If you look at a population in the city of 11,048, which is the current census, we had 800 people respond. So, if you look at the voting numbers, that's probably pretty consistent with the amount of people that don't vote in a presidential election. It's, trying to generate public participation is always an issue from a planning and zoning perspective. I, I'm here eight to five, if you wanted, I understand you work during those hours, and it's often time to get down to City Hall. If you emailed me and wanted to meet afterwards, I would meet with you. If you needed to meet with me at 8 o'clock at night, I would be here, I would meet with you. I'm sure my wife wouldn't like it, but I would be here. So, if that is a concern, if you want to provide input, we get, I get that it shows up to you as these plans and you feel kind of left out in the process, just because something is thrown at you and you have to respond to it. If you are interested in working with us in the comp plan process, Tammy, Brian, Paul, I, Melissa, Christina, we all, we all are here during the week. It is our job to think about these things throughout the process. You get them thrown at you and you have to respond, we are your people here to be the ones that guide the process throughout. But we still need your input, so we are willing to meet with you. If you want to email me, you want to call me, you want to set up a time to meet, that is our job to meet with you and work these things out. And I certainly encourage you to become involved in the comprehensive plan process.
So Patrick, we just completed our comp plan survey.
Correct.
We will be rewriting our comp plan.
Yep.
At planning and zoning meetings.
Yep.
Starting when?
So we are working on scheduling a public open house to discuss the results of that survey. So from there, we had over 100 resident, residents indicate an interest in being more involved. 100 people is kind of big to be a committee, just because if you get 100 people in the room, you'll get 100 different opinions on things. So we're trying to, and of those people that indicated they'd be more interested, we'll invite you as well as everyone else to, depending on the amount of people that respond to want to participate, this room would probably be a little small, so we're probably looking at the community room at the golf course as the place to meet. So we would then have people put their name down if they are more interested in participating. If 100 people wanted to be in that committee, fantastic, but at that point it becomes unworkable. I don't know necessarily how we would break down who gets on that committee, I don't want to cherry pick people just because you should have as equal shot as your neighbor to be on that committee if you want to be, it shouldn't be, we like you versus we don't. So you're on the committee and you're not. So we'll have to find a way to make it an even participation place. But from there, we will, not just at the planning and zoning level, but as a citizen participation level, we'll work through the text and the surveys and the studies that go into that ordinance. So planning and zoning, we'll begin working on it, just trying to get times together. We're already midway through June, so this meeting's likely to be in July. And at the same time, we are doing the master transportation plan, that's probably one that less people know about. When we talk about the connectivity of Passover bridges or a path from the bluffs into the main part of town, that's what we talk about there. And Tammy knows far more about that than I do, but we are working through these things, and we certainly encourage your involvement. Just because planning is not just, it's thrown at us, oh, oh crap, we have to plan. It's a, we have a plan and all the things we do hopefully follow that plan and lead us to a better result. So we are working on it, I encourage you, if you have concerns on anything, even if it is your neighborhood is not the current hot topic because something has happened, but planning the future of your neighborhood is still important. So it's better to come up with a plan ahead of time than react. So if you would like to talk about your neighborhood, where it's going, how we get there, what you like, what you don't, we are here to talk about it with you.
Okay, you done?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, we still have item number 12. I do believe that we've had enough discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Tim, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plan with the condition that-
I'll start over. I'm making a motion to approve the plan as presented with one condition, that the dead-end street of East Alexa Lane is addressed either with a cul-de-sac or turned to a access easement.
Motion?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion up here? Yes, Alyssa?
The thing that, one thing that concerns me is the gentleman who lives right next to Chestnut, and I want to make sure that this doesn't encroach on his land at all, so.
But that all gets taken care of, the platine and-
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
So we have a motion and a second? Okay, all those in favor, signal, they're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So this is on the agenda for the city council on Monday, their meeting starts at 6 o'clock, it's on the agenda, it's the preliminary plan. The formal rezoning starts next month, planning and zoning, it is July 6th and the city council the 17th. I sent letters to the 10 properties within 300 feet in the city, but I encourage you to check the city website and check all sorts of alternative sources as well for information. So, I encourage also participation, if you want to talk, call me, email me, track me down at City Hall, I'd love to talk to you.
All right, Patrick? Patrick, I would like to, since it is 8:36, I would like to remove item 13, we can discuss that at a different meeting.
Yep.
How about, is 14 something that you need an action on, Paul?
Yes, the applicant, the applicant has come into City Hall to, there is an existing swimming pool, do you have a picture?
So that is not the particular example, that's just a general example of kind of what they're looking at, it is a-
Right, but-
Absent the pool, it would be a standalone deck just in the yard.
Okay.
Currently, there's an existing swimming pool above ground, and then the applicant would like to put an attached deck to it.
A detached deck?
Well, detached from the home, and detached from the pool too.
Okay.
But yes, it's detached from the house and detached from the pool.
And we allow for this, or we don't allow for this?
Well, it's a gray area. We have allowed this before, but it came up as a staff discussion and thought since we were having a planning zoning meeting that we would ask the commission to get clarification to make sure we didn't need to possibly adjust the zoning ordinances to clarify it.
Okay.
You know, we allow swimming pools five feet away.
Alyssa, can you shut your microphone off, please?
I'm sorry.
So the swimming pools are covered, the deck is a little bit maybe of a gray area. If it's attached to the house, as we talked about tonight, has to be 25 feet back. And if it's lower than one foot, it can be within five feet of the property line, this is obviously above a foot. And it's not attached to the house, so it's not part of the complex of the house, so.
So Paul, wouldn't this be the same as a gazebo, which would be an accessory structure?
Right, I'm not sure if we call it accessory structure, but we could. I don't know whether I would- I don't know whether I would count that against homeowners, since you can only have one detached accessory structure, you know, lawn or garage, lawn shed. What are your thoughts, Brian? Would you want to count against that number and not allow a homeowner to have a shed, then, in addition to this?
Or do we treat it like a playhouse, where it's accessory, but it's not counted?
I kind of feel like it's a playhouse myself, but I don't know.
But currently, the language in the ordinance, if you consider it an accessory building, there's no exception. It is the one. So, do we need to do something?
Mike?
Do we need to be, you know, 10 feet away from the house so that there's access? I can see how it could be like an access issue for firemen if it's, if it's not far enough away, but too close, you know? I don't know. If that's a, that's a thought, I guess, for me.
My concern, I'm an architect, and we try to find loopholes in ordinances and codes and whatnot.
At least you're honest, sir.
Yes, I'm being honest.
That's awesome.
But, for example, what would prevent the person that was in here tonight from building a deck, having it a half an inch away from their house, and building out into the setback? It's not attached to the house.
Right, well...
If it's a freestanding structure...
Right.
A half inch away from the house.
Right. Well, and there are certain, certainly free-floating decks out there. They're not attached to the house, but if they're adjacent to the house, where the common person would say, "That's part of the house structure," then we've never mince words. It's going to be part of the house, and we're not going to consider it to be a detached structure, even though it's an inch away, so...
1515-24 says, "No accessory building, structure you shall be located within 10 feet of the principal structure." So, if it was within 10 feet of the principal structure, I would interpret it as being a part of the principal structure, for setback purposes. Because then it wouldn't be accessory, because, so what else would it be?
I remember talking about kids' playhouses, and they can be as close as five feet to the property line?
Yeah.
In the back, or in the second...
Yeah, accessory buildings only have to be five feet or more from all property lines.
So, something like this?
So, if it's 10 feet away from the house, it could be accessory and five feet away from the property line. This is the fun that planning and zoning is to talk about.
Further away from the house.
It's a budding or adjacent.
And just think...
If they separate it from the house, they can build up to within five feet of the side yard. If it's attached to the house, you have to follow the setbacks. It makes, it doesn't make sense.
And every one of those people you invited to stay and participate left.
Oh, we have, I have a couple.
Oh, TJ's here. There we go.
These have a diehard...
I mean, I'm just saying, they had every opportunity to contribute to the, you know, zoning ordinance of the city of Brandon, and they left, so...
Three guy, the guy in the hat's just my ride home.
There you go.
His opinion counts.
The guy in the hat. Okay.
In this picture, the pool's fine because it's not built into the ground.
Even if it was, you know, when it's a permanent pool above or below ground, we allow it to be close to the house. There's no setback from the house, but you must keep it five feet from the rear and side property lines. Pool. And in this, what's that, a deck? But...
You know, I think when we did the playhouses, they've got to meet the five and five, but they're exempt as being considered part of, or an accessory structure. So, you know, one way to approach this would be a pool, an above-ground pool and associated deck would have to be five and five, just like a detached accessory building, but it wouldn't, should it or should it not count as an accessory structure?
So, what if it's attached to the house, then is it considered a deck?
Then it's, yeah.
You have to walk out, go down the steps, go up the steps, and then...
Yeah, if the deck's attached to the house, it'd be part of the house, would have to meet the 25.
I don't see it attached to the house.
I have a neighbor who has an above-ground pool, and they take it down in the winter and just put it up in the summer. So, if, if there was a thing like this, and then the, the pool came down in the winter, there would be one whole side of this thing that would have no railing and could just walk right off the edge of it.
Well, potentially, potentially, either as the code personnel officer, the building official, we would come and talk to him about that, because anything over 30 inches would have to have a guardrail. So, I would, I would probably require the homeowner to put some type of temporary guardrail there so that nobody could fall off 130 inches of the, to the grade.
Also, I know those kids' playhouses, and I don't know the measurements of them, but I'm guessing they'd be a lot smaller than something like this. This seems to me like it would be more, way more square feet than a kid's playhouse, but I...
We look at the size of the playhouses.
We did this something, yeah.
Correct, 96 square feet.
I mean, yeah.
So, how big?
If we limit it, people can put this in their entire backyard, five feet away from the property line. Their whole backyard could be a raised deck around the pool, five feet away from the property line.
We don't want that, I don't think.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, if we don't limit it, that's, that could happen.
So, if we, if we have a playhouse, it's 96 square feet, what does a 96-square-foot deck look like?
Nine by nine.
Nine by nine? Ooh, that's still pretty big. So, we would, we could theoretically allow a 96-square-foot deck plus a shed if we wanted to? Can we limit the decking so that we don't run into a situation where it's five feet? Like we did with playhouses, we limited the size of it so that they couldn't build three sheds, and there were two, basically, garden sheds in their backyard. Any other thoughts on this?
I remember talking about that at the time.
Ha.
See, yeah, it's a, it's a kid's playhouse. Little Lucy loves to play among the lawn mowers and the weed whacker.
Of course.
And the toolbox.
What, so you asked us the question, Paul. What, what were your initial thoughts on this? That you should allow it or shouldn't allow it?
Should allow it, but I will acknowledge Brian's comment that we, a limit would probably be going in the right direction.
Limit the square footage?
Right, with the square footage limit. Not to be counted as an accessory structure.
Correct.
So, don't count against that, but maybe some kind of a square foot limit, whatever that may be.
Yep.
I, I'm a little bit hesitant on, on sticking with the five feet, though. A garden shed, you're not going to be sitting on the roof of the garden shed. On a deck, you're going to be up there, so you're going to be encroaching a little bit more on your neighbor's privacy with a deck than you are a garden shed.
What happens if you build this thing 12 feet tall? Then the pool goes away. All of a sudden, you have a storage shed with a patio on top. You sit down.
Okay.
So, in this situation, we'd require an opaque fence, right? Even though it's an above-ground pool?
Say that again?
Do we require an opaque fence for an above-ground pool?
We require fencing.
Well, a barrier, a 40, 48-inch barrier.
Okay, doesn't have to be opaque though?
No.
On what kind of pool, though?
No.
And with some of the penalties they are, your clients concerned about.
As I had this ques, I talked with Paul about this the other day, about a pool. What's considered a permanent pool? Would this be a permanent pool to you sitting above ground? If it's up for six months out of the year, then they take it down with no fence around it at all, and it's deeper than two foot?
Cause there are...
A few examples like that in town where they have these type of pools with no fencing.
There's a lot of them. There's a lot of them here. You can put a pool and a small deck, and allow it, like 210.
So, is, is this something that a current building code takes care of? Not at all?
Well, the building code doesn't get involved in zoning issues.
And so, you just want to know from us that if we would agree that that's not a second accessory structure?
So, the building code would require, if it's over 30 inches above grade, to have a railing around it like this one?
Okay.
There's, there's certainly building code issues with the deck itself. We'll handle that offline.
Okay. So, you're wondering about just whether we should allow it from a zoning standpoint?
Right, right. Is it going to be counted against accessory structure in the setback? Do we need a setback from the house and/or from the, from the lines, property lines?
What are we allowed for square footage of an accessory structure? 150 square feet?
What, 1,000?
1,000.
1,000 square feet for an accessory structure.
As long as it's not...
Now, it has to meet the setback requirements, and it has to...
And cannot be larger than this principal home.
Correct.
The 150 rule is where you have to match the siding and roofing to your home.
Yes.
If it's less than 150.
So, are, are most of these pools, what's the gap for most of these types of pools? Are they three foot deep?
Four, three, four, I don't know.
Four, four and a half.
Four, I guess. So, it'd be a four-foot-tall deck?
You got a four-foot-tall deck with a three-and-a-half-foot-tall railing, and people stand up there.
What other things that are not enclosed count as accessory structures? You mentioned the gazebo. Are there any other things?
Yeah, really, we, we don't regulate gazebo. They're, they're not counted against it, a gazebo.
Gazebo isn't?
Lawn shed, a detached garage.
Okay, so things that are enclosed, like a shed with a door that you go inside, this isn't...
Yeah.
Unless you built it with, like you say, that, I, I see lattice down there, but if you put it, if you enclosed all that, put doors, and stored stuff in there, then it would be enclosed.
Just a suggestion, not that I want to cause staff extra work, but maybe we could do an inventory of existing pools and decks. Just looking through the GIS map, we've got a few examples here that you could take a look at. Here's one out in the bluffs where it's an above-ground pool. The deck is attached to the house.
Okay.
There's another one on Ponderosa where it's a detached, or it's a pool, the deck is right at, on the fence, right on the property line. So, we can possibly get some inventory, so you could take a look at some examples as to what we're talking about, and then express your concerns on each of those.
Is this something somebody had requested? Is that why you're asking us, Paul?
Yes, there was a specific homeowner that actually called me today, because he thought the meeting had already occurred, and I said, "No, that means I can call tonight." So, he will be on the horn with me about 9:00, 10:00 tomorrow, asking, can he move forward with this project?
It's tough to do this stuff right.
Right. Yeah, he actually asked permission.
It is better off when people just...
So, because there are ones already out there...
Yep.
I'm inclined to move forward with this one and then, and then look at, at future ones.
It's kind of tough to not say, oh, we already got existing.
I would tend to, I mean, you're their building official. I'll lean on your expertise on this one. Award-winning building official.
So, if it's attached, if it's attached to a house, which I agree, I can only think of one that I've personally been to that's like that, but that's, be relatively common. So, if it's attached to a house, is the pool, is it just to meet the deck standards? I mean, as it would, the issue is if it's not attached to the house, then...
Yes.
Attached to the house, then it's all a setback.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And then if it's not detached, then...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I...
Can, can we agree that Paul should move on with this tomorrow, when the guy calls and say yes? And if we want to study this further, we can do it at a later meeting? As my wife says, no good decisions happen after 9:00.
I am hesitant, so... I'm hesitant to not have a setback, because this is living area outside, and you're going to be, you know, if we allow people to go up to five feet from the property line, that's, that's really encroaching on somebody else's property. So, I think there should be, I don't know if this particular guy has...
This particular one is eight feet off. The deck is eight feet off the rear property line and way off the side property line. There's not an issue at all on the side. Rear, eight foot.
Is he just about half a pool?
It looks like it's about an eighth of the pool. It's just at one end.
An eighth of the pool?
Yeah, he's got like an oblong.
Oh.
And it's just at one little end.
He just wants that one end.
Yeah, he wants access, you know, without having his temporary plastic ladders, have something more permanent for everybody to get up on.
Okay.
Put a slide on.
All right. Okay, we'll move forward with that.
Okay, sir.
Well, I don't see another agenda item, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, we would...
I agree.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'm assuming nobody wants any more discussion on that, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:55.